Good afternoon, everyone. We are going to give the commissioners just a few more minutes to join before we get started with our hearing. I just wanted to let everyone know. We will get started in roughly five minutes. All right, five minutes. Thank you all.
It's not letting me listen.
Okay, I see that we have Chair Han and Commissioner Coleman online. So I will go ahead and start with our meeting. Let's go ahead and go on the record. Today is April first, twenty twenty-five, and the current time is twelve forty-eight P M. The question and answer portion, which everyone just participated in, is concluded. If you did attend that, I do hope that you were able to get your questions answered. And we will now start on the comment portion of the hearing. The Missouri Public Service Commission has set this time for a local public hearing to give members of the public a chance to comment about Evergy's application for certificates of convenience and necessity for three natural gas electrical production facilities. This is file number E A twenty twenty-five zero zero seven five. My name is Charles Hatcher, and I am the regulatory law judge that will oversee this hearing. The commission regulates the rates charged by public utility companies in Missouri to ensure that those rates are just and reasonable. The commission also regulates the quality of service and safety of the operations of public utilities. The commission is made up of five commissioners. The commission's chair is Kayla Han, and the commissioners are Maida Coleman, Glenn Kolkmeier, and John Mitchell. There is one vacancy at the moment. The commissioners are appointed by the governor and confirmed by the Senate. The commission employs a staff of engineers, accountants, attorneys, financial analysts, and other specialists in the field of utility regulation. With me today are Chair Kayla Han and Commissioner Maida Coleman. Commissioner John Mitchell will be expected to be joining us later. Do the commissioners have any opening remarks that they would like to make?
Yes, thank you Judge Hatcher. This is Chair Han. Just want to say on behalf of myself, Commissioner Coleman, Commissioner Mitchell, and Commissioner Kolkmeier, we really appreciate folks taking time out of their day to give us feedback and public comment on these proposed certificates. So we will listen intently, and we'll look forward to hearing what the public has to say. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Chair Han. And at this time, I'd like to ask the parties who are in attendance to go ahead and enter their appearance for the record. We'll start with the company for Evergy, please. Quick reminder, if you've called in on the phone, it is star six to unmute yourself. Counsel for Evergy, go ahead.
Judge, this is Roger Steiner, entering appearance for myself and Cole Bailey. Our address is twelve hundred Main Street, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one oh five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. And for the commission's staff.
Hi, this is Andrea Hansen. I'm entering my parents or the parents of myself and Lexi Klaus, who is also attending this virtual hearing. We've provided the spelling of our names and also our work address to the stenographer.
Thank you, ladies. And for the office of the public counsel.
Nathan Williams, Chief Deputy Public Counsel, appearing on behalf of the Office of the Public Counsel. P O Box twenty-two thirty, Jefferson City, Missouri, six five one oh two.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And we do have a number of interveners in this case. I don't know if they will be in attendance today, but I'd like to offer them the opportunity to enter their appearance. Are there any intervening parties who are here who would like to have their appearance entered? Okay, hearing none. This is a fairly well-attended hearing, which is great, as the commission does want to hear input from the public. But I am also mindful that I would like to give everyone the opportunity to speak, so I will be limiting comments to three minutes per person. Also, I'd like to note that if someone has said the same comments that you were going to make, please let us know that you echo those earlier remarks. There's no need to expound on something that's already been said, but we do want to know what are people's experiences or concerns with. I'm going to ask that everyone please be polite and courteous and respect people's opinions and give them the same courtesy that I would hope they would give to you. Now, many of you did sign up in advance, and I'm going to call those names first. For anyone who did not sign up to testify in advance, after I call the list of witnesses, I will call for any other witnesses, and that will be your time to testify. When I do call your name, please unmute yourself and tell me that you're here, and I will place you under oath. I will then ask you to state and spell your name for the court reporter, and then you can give your comments to the commissioners. After you are finished giving your comments, I'm going to ask for you to stay available for just a second at the microphone, or actually on your phone, until I excuse you. Either myself, one of the parties, or the commissioners may have questions for you. I'll take a brief pause after each witness testifies to see if anyone has a question, but I'm not going to ask after each witness. And I do want to make sure it's clear, the commissioners and myself will not be able to answer your questions today. And that's because the commissioners have to remain impartial until after the evidence is presented at the evidentiary hearing. And that's exactly why we couldn't be here during the question and answer portion, that we might hear factual information that we don't have a right to hear yet. If you have a question and you did not get all of your questions answered during that question and answer period, I would encourage you to speak with representatives of the company, the commission's staff, or the Office of the Public Counsel. So with those announcements in mind, I'm going to go ahead and start calling names off of my pre-registered list. I will do my best to read and pronounce the names correctly. If I do mispronounce your name, please let me know, as I don't mean to. The first name I have on my list is Josh Moutrey.
Hi, yes, I am here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moutrey. I'm going to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And if you could please state and spell your name for our court reporter.
Josh Moutrey, J O S H, last name is Moutrey, M O U, T is in Tom, R A Y.
Thank you, Mr. Moutrey, and please go ahead and tell the commissioners your comments.
Well, I live directly across the street from the proposed gas site at Mullen Creek Number One. About two thousand and seven, my wife and I began looking for a place to build our home for our growing family. We had a specific school district in mind, and this location was perfect. We were told it was never going to be for sale. However, one day, our dreams came true, and we received a phone call that the property was now for sale. We bought it that night. From that point on, our family began to save, staying home on the weekends, putting away money every chance we could get. We sold our cars so we could access the equity, so one day we could build the house on the property. Two thousand and ten, our time had come. We had a newborn, a two-year-old, money in our pocket, and a builder available to make our dreams come true. Two thousand and eleven, we moved in just in time to celebrate my daughter's first birthday, and a few months later, my son's fourth. With a set of grandparents just down the road and their cousins close by, we had found the perfect spot to build our forever home. For the past fourteen years, we have poured every ounce of spare energy into our property, making it beautiful. We had visions of a barn in the southeast corner to host family gatherings, landscaping projects planned, additions to the house planned, and specific trees picked out to go into specific spots. The construction of a home never ends. We are also embedded in our community. Since twenty twenty, I have been the chairman of the Barnard Christian Church Board. I have chaired the Greater Southern Nottoway County Community Foundation, which is a community betterment for over ten years. I chaired two school bond committees for the South Nottoway School District. My wife has taught at the South Nottoway School for twenty years. Again, this is our home. On Tuesday evening, the Maryville Forum posted an article regarding Evergy's plans for a natural gas plant directly across the road from my house. My phone began to ring with concerned friends from all over the area. With one article, our lives had changed. Our stomachs turned. Our minds began to race, and our sleep has been lost. Our family had a real problem. From there, we began to research the health risks of living near a natural gas plant, and despite it being termed a clean energy source, it is not. It may be cleaner, but by no means is it clean. From methane exposure, carbon dioxide, oxides of nitrogen in the air, to the mercury in the water, we are in direct danger. This plant will be directly to our west. All of our weather, from rain and snow to the constant wind that blows, will be directly exposed, our house, twenty-four seven. Whether we are outside with our kids and future grandkids, or relaxing on the porch, or even sitting inside our home with heat or the A C blowing, our air will be filled with this invisible killer. In conclusion, Evergy is changing the course of our family's future. We now must choose between staying in our home and risking early mortality, C O P D, birth defects of our future grandkids, numerous other health problems, or just packing up our family's home and starting over somewhere else. You have us in an impossible spot, Evergy. This isn't just a gas plant on rural farmland community. It's upending lives and a cause for distress. I do appreciate your time this afternoon and your consideration. The Moutrey family.
Thank you, Mr. Moutrey, for being here and telling us your story. I appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay, hearing no questions. We'll move to the next name I have on my list, which is Preston Smith. And if you're on the phone, the method to unmute yourself is pressing star six. Is Preston Smith available? Okay, I see a name on the Webex for Preston Smith, but they may have stepped away.
Yes, he had to step away for a minute. Would you be able to come back to him in just a little while?
Absolutely. We will just come right back.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
The next name I have on my list is Diana Klein. Is Diana Klein available? Okay, and I'll circle back around to that name as well. The next name I have is Nikki Caraveo. Nikki Caraveo. If you're on a phone, you press star six to unmute yourself. All right, we'll recall Nikki Caraveo later. Roy Werner. Is there a Roy Werner? All right, the next name I have is Askea Howell. Askea Howell. All right, and all of these names that I'm calling that I don't have an answer, I will recall again at the end. Alice Norris. Alice Norris. All right, and a person who has their hand raised, Sherry Stechman.
Sherry Stechman, S A T R R I, Stechman, S T E C H M A N N. Did you want my address?
No, no, thank you. If you can tell me what county you're in, though.
Clay County.
All right, thank you. Ms. Stechman, I'd like to go ahead and swear you in before you begin your testimony to the commissioners. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. Please go ahead and tell us your comments.
Well, first of all, I do not believe that Evergy is being transparent. No one addressed my question as to what I get in return for funding their power plant that they can't pay for on their own because they are not financially viable to do so. This is discriminatory to people who live in bigger houses and does not affect people the same who live in smaller houses. Evergy states it's based on my consumption, but again, I shouldn't be penalized for living in a bigger home. Our rates get increased to pay for other people's business upgrades or residential upgrades. In my lifetime, and I'm fifty-five and proud of it, no one has ever paid for my business upgrades and anything. Sounds like socialism, and we live in America, home of the brave, land of the free. As long as all glory flies, Evergy is still under these principles. Mr. Moutrey, I have so much compassion for what's happening to him. I think that it's an atrocity. We, you know, Mr. Humphries, Jason Humphries, is talking about portfolios. It's a great analogy, but as an investor, I would never invest in something which he was trying to, you know, use that with solar power. If I knew that it's completely one hundred percent failed Texas during the geoengineering cold weather in which they are now, Texas is now trying to pass legislation to stop Tim Trails. Evergy, people should watch the movie The Dimming. It's a great movie with Air Force generals admitting that they're spraying our skies to change the weather. It's U S patents, no less. But it's, it's, it really is frustrating that Evergy sends me emails on how good I am if I use less energy. When the earth produces unlimited oil, it's not from dinosaurs. John D. Rockefeller made up that story to create scarcity. So I'm wide awake. I know about the Great Reset, and I'm ready for it. I don't agree with Evergy having people pay for their businesses as on their website. They're going to own it. I'm not going to own it. I'm not getting any dividend from it. I'm not getting any kind of, you know, forty-year discount, because I plan on living a long time. Nothing was offered to me in that regard, and I don't agree with it, and I think that it's wrong, and I don't think anyone should be pushing for people to pay for this plant, and I don't agree that it should be in that area at all. I've been up there, and those people deserve better than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stechman. I appreciate your comments. All right, hearing no questions, we'll move to Camelia Cochran. Is Camelia Cochran available? Okay, hearing none. That is the end of my list of pre-registered witnesses. So what I'd like to do now is I'll open it up to the floor for anyone who did not register but who would like to provide comments to the commissioners. And then I will go back through and read the names of the registered witnesses who had not had an opportunity yet to speak. So is there anyone in attendance who would like to go ahead and testify who did not sign up in advance? I'll just go ahead and speak up, and we'll get your name and go from there.
Yes, I have a testimony, please.
Yes, go ahead and give me your name.
Yes, it's Michelle, M I C H E L L E. Last name is Arps, A is in Apple, R is in Richard, P is in Paul, S is in Sam.
Thank you, Ms. Arps, and let me go ahead and swear you in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please go ahead and proceed with your comments.
Yes, I had asked a question earlier, and the answer that I got, I'm not sure that I understand exactly, but I was asking about the peaking plant that we're now getting from the Pickering Plant out of state, if that was going to be going away. And I understand that it's not going away. And then I also asked the question about, you know, natural gas. I understand that they're going to be getting those from high-pressure lines. However, I believe that distribution works similar probably to Evergy's distribution and the fact that it does come from a high-pressure to plants where it's made available for residential customers. But my biggest concern there is are we going to be forced to pay as we did in the year of another line item of fifteen years? And I was told that, you know, because of the larger natural gas lines, that that will probably not happen because there's also diesel backup. And then the next thing I have, we still don't have any meter numbers available to us as customers. No begin bill read and no end bill read as with Spire, and as with our water company for the time period of use. Also, in my recent bill, there was an offer to buy solar from a Hawthorne Solar Plant. And it was my understanding from the previous, you know, commission hearing last July that we're not able to get, you know, any kind of backup power from Hawthorne or another facility within the system to feed the Evergy Metro West. So I'm just wondering how the solar is going to be able to go down those same lines since we don't have the coal available. And I also, I feel terrible for this family out there. I understand, because I've I've been building my home here since two thousand and one, trying to make it all electric.
Right after you left, he said it's
Okay, good. Well, thank you.
I'm sorry.
We just had some crossover. That line has been muted. Please, I'm sorry for the interruption. Go ahead.
Oh, well, thank you. So again, I don't know, I echo the gentleman who's set up his family in a specific place. I did the same thing. And, you know, electricity was told to be the cheaper, more viable source. But that doesn't seem to be the case at this time. I would like to know that residential should be cheaper than commercial, since we're not making a profit just trying to be retired in a home and maintain heating and cooling here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arps. You mentioned your bills were having some issues. You were concerned about not having beginning or ending readings. I wanted to pass along the Evergy customer service number. They might be able to assist you with that. That number is eight 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 four seven one five two seven five. Again, that's eight 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 four seven one five two seven five. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, if it were on the bill, that would be great, just as the other utilities are required to, at least I assume they're still required to give you the beginning read and the end read, so you could look at your meter and look at your meter number and make sure indeed that's you. And as I stated in the open forum, the readings are spotty at best. I don't know if your cell readers are malfunctioning, but when we get into the time of use, that's going to be a huge concern, because, you know, we're trying to do the right thing and not use the majority of our power during peak time. So anyways, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Ms. Arps. I appreciate you being here and letting us know your your input. Are there any other persons who would like to testify who did not sign up in advance? It's pressing star six to unmute if you've called in on a telephone. Okay, I'm going to go back and read the names that I have. Preston Smith. Is Preston Smith available?
Yes, I'm here now.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'd like to go ahead and swear you in, and then I'll ask you to spell and state and spell your name for the court reporter. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do. And my name is Preston Smith in Blue Springs. My name is P R E S T O N, Smith, S M I T H.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Go ahead with your comments.
Good. I wanted to let you know that I attended the last round of public hearings that Evergy had regarding their rate increase proposal that they had last year. At the time, I stressed the need to get away from the Green New Deal and want the idea to stay with more reliable fossil fuel sources. And today, I'm here to urge the very same approach. I had some of my questions answered before, but then the others that were not answered. First of all, I understand these three natural gas plants are supposed to be hydrogen-capable. I'm wondering, does this add to the cost? And is it necessary to include this ability to transition to hydrogen, especially given since natural gas is so plentiful? Okay, these natural gas plants are supposed to produce twenty-five hundred megawatts. I'm wondering, is it still necessary to retire the Evergy's forty-five hundred megawatt coal-fired plant? It seems to me like if we just keep the coal-fired plant running or even expand it, that we would not even, we may not even need to talk about the natural gas plants. Okay, I noticed that is also part of this proposal. Evergy wants to have two solar facilities. They total one hundred and sixty-five megawatts. Again, is it necessary to build these solar facilities when you've got a perfectly good coal plant that is doing just great? If you look at their website, they have a very long-term goal to produce the net-zero carbon emissions by twenty forty-five. I asked in the Q and A, I said, is this necessarily a goal? Why is this so important? And they said it seemed to be an indication that they want to keep this mix of energy sources and sort of spread their risk around from different source to another. And I agree, that's probably reasonable. But it's probably also reasonable to think that if you're thinking that we're going to get energy cheap and plentiful in the future based on seventeen percent of the Evergy production from solar and thirty percent from wind, I think that's unreasonable. Right now, they want to take the coal plant from fifty-two percent down to seven percent of the source of energy, and I don't agree with that either. And furthermore, they haven't even mentioned about whether or not they have to continue to buy out-of-state power from Mississippi or any other state for the foreseeable future, even if they put these plants online. I'm concerned that they're not meeting their energy needs already because of their desire to go green, and that's why we're having to buy power from out of state. I believe the United States has abundant reserves for coal and natural gas. Fossil fuel has always been a very reliable and predictable source of energy. For us to go green and emphasize wind and solar as Evergy has, I think that's been a wrong case of direction, and I don't appreciate having to pay higher electric bills than I have to, just to think I'm doing something for the climate change that's a totally unproven theory. I don't want to see my electric bills explode in the next few years because Evergy has a desire to go green. I do not want to subsidize some green experiment just for political expediency. I call on the leadership of Evergy to take a hard right turn and support customers and lower energy costs rather than some global rather than some global idea about climate change. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate your comments. All right, hearing no questions, we'll move on to the next name I have, Diana Klein. Diana Klein. And again, it is star six if you called in on a phone to join our meeting. If you're on the app or the computer, there's just a mute and unmute button. The next name I have is Nikki Caraveo. Hearing none. Roy Werner. Roy Werner. No response. Let's try Askeya Howell. Askeya Howell. And again, it's star six if you're on your phone to unmute. Hearing none, let's move to Alice Norris. And hearing none, let's move to Camelia Cochran. Camelia Cochran. Okay, I will ask those in the audience one last time, and then that will take us to the end of this hearing. Are there any members of the audience who have not had a chance to testify yet that would like to? Please just go ahead and speak up. You unmute yourself if you're on a phone by pressing star six. Hearing none, one last opportunity, and then we'll be ending the hearing. Okay, hearing none. I would like to thank all of our participants for their testimony today. We've had a very good turnout. I understand that there was some good information provided and asked for in the question and answer portion. I'd like to see if our commissioners have any closing remarks.
Yes, Commissioner Kolkmeier.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Yes, I want to thank everyone that participated today and gave us their testimony. We really appreciate it. We really listen to those out there in the public and the ratepayers. So thanks again, and thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I would note for the record, Commissioner Kolkmeier had joined us for the hearing. And as the commissioner said, I do want to thank everyone for coming out today. We try and schedule these hearings to be at the lunch hour so that you don't have to miss too much work, if that's the time that works best for you. If you do know someone who could not be present and would still like to make comments on this case, you can go to the PSC website. That's psc.moe.gov and go to the link marked Submit Comments. It's in the upper right hand of the page. Just make sure to include the case number. And again, this case number is EA-2025-0075. If you have any questions for the Office of the Public Counsel, you can email those to M O P C O at O P C dot mo.gov. I'll repeat that one more time. M O P C O at O P C dot mo.gov. And I thought I saw a commissioner go to speak. Did we have any commissioners who wanted to make any statements? Okay, sorry. My mistake. Okay, thank you all, and we are adjourned. We are also off the record. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate you being here and taking time out of your day. Have a good rest of your rest of your Tuesday.